Welcome, everyone. This is a Prescott City Council Study Session. Today is Tuesday, December 14th. We'll start with a roll call.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Hall.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
Excellent. Now, before we start this discussion, if you are a member of any one of our boards, commissions, or committees, would you please make sure you fill out the sign-in sheet on the back table so that we can track and verify your training attendance? So let's proceed with the discussion and the topic.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is our annual open meeting law, public records and conflict of interest training. We do this every year for the newly elected officials anytime there's an election, but also for the boards and commissioners. We're also going to touch a little bit upon harassment law, which is required for annual training by the EEOC. While you are not necessarily employers or bosses other than for four people, those harassment laws apply equally to you as elected officials. So we'll get into it. First, congratulations to the new council members and our new mayor, who's no longer a mayor-elect. The mayor has certainly been through this many times, but the rest of you have not. And open meeting law, public records, and conflict of interest are really the kind of the big three of things you're going to be dealing with almost every day in your elected life. So we like to do some immediate training. And I know some of you have probably already attended the newly elected officials training that the League puts on. They do a nice job as well. But that's another good resource for you is the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. So let's get into it. Open meeting laws, often called sunshine laws. The idea is to bring transparency and openness into local government. And it is the public policy of this state that official deliberations and proceedings be conducted openly. We maximize public access and participation, and any uncertainty is resolved in favor of openness in government. So we get to the main component of the open meeting law is what is a meeting? And that is defined in statute. Statute of those laws put together by the state legislature, the Arizona legislative body, and they define in ARS 38431-4 what a meeting is. A meeting is a gathering in person or through technological devices of a quorum of the public body to discuss, propose, deliberate, or take legal action. A quorum of a seven-member body like the city council is four people. And oftentimes, our council members are members of, let's say, a board or commission, can appear technologically. They don't have to be here in person. They can appear by phone. Over COVID, we certainly did many Zoom meetings. So it's not unheard of. But the idea is to make sure you recognize a meeting when it's happening. What do you do if you don't have a quorum? And I'm just going to use the council as the kind of main illustrative body, a seven-member council. If you don't have a quorum, discussions should be postponed. You just don't have the meeting. You can't have the meeting. It's a matter of law. Discussions and presentations will be rescheduled. I've been here 16 years, and I think of only one occasion where we didn't have a quorum. I think it was our planning and zoning commission. So we just rescheduled the meeting and didn't have the meeting. So notices and agendas. This is kind of the clerk's bailiwick. It's her raison d'etre, her reason to exist.
Did you jump into French?
Oui. Meetings must comply with notice, agenda, and minute requirements. Again, there's the statutory side. They all fall within Title 38 of the Arizona revised statutes. The notice must inform when and where the public body will meet. Agendas must contain adequate information to inform the public on the matters to be discussed or decided. We highly recommend against topics like old business and new business because that does not give the public sufficient opportunity to know what's being discussed. It's too vague. We combine our notice and agenda, which is allowed, and you have to give a minimum of 24 hours' notice before a meeting can be had. There, of course, are occasional exceptions. You can recess and resume a properly noticed meeting to a later date by making an announcement at the meeting and describing what agenda items will be covered. You see that often in cities and towns that have night meetings that go well until midnight, and people just start falling asleep. You can continue on with that meeting to another time. And when you have actual emergencies, who must comply? Public bodies must comply. An entity, however designated, officially established on motion or order of the public body or a presiding officer of a public body, whose members are appointed for a specific purpose, making a recommendation concerning a decision to be made or considered, or a course of conduct to be taken or considered by the public body. So the open meeting law just doesn't apply to the city council. It applies to all of their official subcommittees, like our border issues committee. They have to do a notice and an agenda, and they have to have a quorum before they can meet. These apply equally to standing committees, special committees. In Prescott, we have something called mayor's committees, advisory committees, and subcommittees. And what must a public body do? Meet and take legal action, properly notice and agendize meetings. The exception to that is there can be executive sessions, and we'll get into that a little bit further. So executive sessions are allowed as a statutory right. If the council wants to do them, they don't have to have executive sessions. But if they choose to, they can have a meeting outside of a regularly scheduled meeting for seven reasons for convening into executive session. The most common are to discuss personnel matters, to discuss information that is confidential as a matter of law, to get legal advice from the city's attorneys, and to discuss settled contracts and property negotiations. Those will be the most obvious ones. There's a couple more for discussions with Indian tribes and employee organizations and unions, but we don't have the employee unions here.
Can we ask questions, or do you want to?
Yeah, by all means, feel free to answer questions. Here's my ground rule for asking questions. If you're going to ask hypothetical questions, you know, let's not discuss anything that may be before the council.
To talk about executive session discussions this morning.
Yeah.
So hypothetically.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically, our executive sessions are, the agendas are posted.
They are.
None of the materials are. So if you're reaching out for any questions or information or anything like that, you're allowed to do any of that research with staff or whoever is mentioned on the agenda. You can state that they're on the agenda. You just can't disclose anything that was happened during the actual executive session.
There's an administrative and an actual confidentiality requirement in the law that says you can't discuss things that occurred in the executive session. But if you wanted to reach out to a staff member and get more information, maybe, that's usually allowable.
Ahead of time.
Ahead of time.
Or after, I guess, as long as you don't discuss what was discussed.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So who can attend executive sessions? Members of the public body. Again, the city council is our illustrative purposes today.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah.
Can you please speak into your microphone? I've gotten a couple of notifications that they can't hear you.
Coming off of a week of an upper respiratory infection, so I don't want to get poor council and more sick, although I'm fairly confident I'm no longer contagious. So members of the public body can attend an executive session. Persons who are subject to a personnel discussion can attend. The auditor general can attend. I've never seen the auditor general attend an executive session, but it's at least allowable under the statute. And individuals whose presence is reasonably necessary in order for the public body to carry out its executive session function. So oftentimes, we'll have department heads who have specific information into the executive session to provide that information to the council. So what are some of the pitfalls of an executive session? Again, what happens like Las Vegas, right? What happens in an executive session stays in an executive session. Failure to advise persons about the confidentiality requirement, which is mandatory. So the city attorney will read a blurb before every meeting that says that confidentiality is mandatory pursuant to that section of the statute. You can't take legal action in an executive session. Votes must take place in public. And just some basic information from the Attorney General Handbook. A public officer or employee shall now disclose or use, without appropriate authorization, any information that is acquired by the officer or employee in the course of the officer or employee's official duties, and that is declared confidential by law. And members of a public body and others attending the executive session must ensure that the information remains confidential. In addition to violating the open meeting law, criminal charges may arise from release of confidential information. So what constitutes legal advice? Getting a little more technical here, but legal advice encompasses advice given to the public body regarding the legal ramifications of the facts and information given to him and/or her and the legality of the proposed action. And we like to cite this case, the City of Prescott versus the town of Chino Valley. So this stuff can be local at times. This is a case that went up to the Arizona Supreme Court and set some precedential law regarding confidential information in executive sessions. Was that you?
What happened? What happened?
I don't remember.
It even predates you, though.
That's a really good example.
It's like the 90s or something. It's not that good.
Who won? Do you know who won, at least? Did anybody win?
I don't think, no. It was more like, it probably involved probably a transportation task that the city was imposing on Chino Valley. But the whole name of the case was more of, you can't circumvent the open meeting law by going to an executive session, discussing something that isn't within those seven allowable things. So it was more of an executive session to kind of get information beyond the scope of what would have been allowed. That's my recollection of it, but it's been a long time. How to avoid pitfalls of the open meeting law? Don't poll others on the council or your commissions. You want to limit your discussions with other members to public meetings. Safest thing to do is always have all of your discussions in an agendized public meeting. We recommend you don't send emails to each other. We'll get into that a little bit later on. Some common violations called daisy chaining or hub-and-spoke violations of the open meeting law. You don't want to distribute information to the council yourselves. You do have staff liaisons who can provide information to others and avoid a violation of the open meeting law. And we always recommend disbanding meetings when a quorum is not in attendance. So prohibited acts and violations. Don't poll individual commission members to reach a decision before the meeting. Discussion deliberation between less than a quorum for the purpose of circumventing the open meeting law can also be a violation, and we'll get into that a little bit more specifically. So what is circumvention of the open meeting law? You cannot use any device to circumvent the law. It's often called splintering the quorum. And those are serial communications, and those communications can be verbal or written, electronic. You don't want to poll. Again, we talked about a hub-and-spoke wheel analogy of a violation. Let's say you have one elected official who's the hub of a wheel, and then starts reaching out to individual council members proposing some sort of legal action. You get to that magic number of four, which is your quorum. You're proposing legal action. You have a violation of the open meeting law. Daisy chaining, you know? Picture a daisy chain a little girl might make around her head, where one council member says to another council, "I propose some sort of legal action. Let's fire the city manager at the next meeting." It was like throwing him under the bus. Of course, it's fun.
Don't mind.
And you have a communication between two people. Let's say the second person then reaches out to a third person and says, "I think we should fire the city manager at the next meeting. That's a good idea." The third person reaches out to the fourth person proposing a legal action. You got a violation of the open meeting law because you're at that quorum number again. Four people proposing a legal action and not doing it in a regular meeting. There are certain prohibited two-way communications, like discussion, deliberation, taking legal action, back and forth among a quorum on a matter that could perceivably come before the board on board business. So outside of a regular meeting, if you're just chit-chatting, you want to avoid any argument that you're proposing some sort of legal action. Save it for the public meetings. So again, from the Attorney General Handbook, just a good policy primer. All discussions, deliberations, considerations, or consultations amongst a majority of members of the public body regarding matters that may perceivably require a final action or final decision by the governing body constitute legal action and therefore must be conducted in a public meeting or executive session in accordance with the open meeting law. The safest course of action is to assume the open meeting law applies whenever a majority of the body discusses the business of the public body. There are also some prohibited one-way communications. Again, all of this kind of comes back to this concept of proposing legal action, which is a very broad definition. Propose means to, put forward, or for consideration, discussion, or adoption. It only takes one person to propose legal action. Remember the hub-and-spoke analogy. You cannot propose legal actions outside of a notice meeting. So these are, again, from the Attorney General Handbook, actions and activities covered by the open meeting law. If an electronic communication from one member of the public body proposes a legal action and is sent to enough members of the public to form a quorum, a violation occurs. If no member of the public body even responds to the electronic communication, be careful with emails. So what does propose mean? Here's an example. Councilperson Smith was admitted to the hospital last night. That's not proposing legal action. That's just imparting information on something that would not necessarily come before the board. So you're not really proposing anything. Versus, we should install a crosswalk at first and main. That does propose legal action. It's more than a topic for the agenda because it urges or suggests an outcome. Again, a couple more examples. Here's the recipe for the lemon bars I brought to the last meeting. Versus, I hope I can count on you, all of you, to vote in favor of Agenda Item 5. The first one, not a violation. You're not proposing any legal action. The second one, a problem because you are asking for a legal decision to be made. So serial communications can violate the open meeting law. So verbal serial communications going from one person to the next, sharing communications among a quorum would violate the open meeting law. So just be careful of kind of who you're talking to and what the matter is for discussion. You can also have nonverbal serial communications, like letters. A series of letters from one member to the next could violate the open meeting law if they're proposing legal action. Emails is the one, you know, we're kind of most concerned about because email is just technology that we have all come to use. So even emails that occur at different times can still constitute a meeting. You may have somebody proposing a legal action, and you don't respond to it for a month, but you respond to it, and then you have others respond to it. It could be a problem. The point is simultaneous communications are not necessary for a potential violation of an open meeting law. You can't use your emails to circumvent the open meeting law. You cannot use email among a quorum to propose legal action, discuss legal action, deliberate on legal action, or take legal action. Again, email and other communications could constitute a meeting. Again, if you're proposing legal action, and it gets to your magic quorum number, that's a problem. So the use of email among a quorum of members to discuss public matters is prohibited by the open meeting law. Emails regarding commission business are a public record. We'll get into that later. Just basically, everything you do at this point as officials becomes a matter of a public record. So you just want to be careful. Staff liaison may not communicate the positions of various commissioners. Again, we said one of the ways you can avoid an open meeting law violation is to use your staff liaisons to communicate information. But one of the things the staff liaison should not be doing is saying, "Well, I heard from Councilman X that he plans on voting this way." So keep an eye out for that sort of behavior. So email communications are treated the same as any other form of communication between board members, and emails exchanged among a quorum of the board that involves discussion, deliberations, or taking legal action. You're starting to see the theme here. Matters that may come before the board constitute a meeting, and thus would violate the open meeting law. So staff email. We encourage you to rely on your staff to get your information you need. Staff may send email to board members. Passive receipt of information from a staff member without more does not violate the open meeting law. An example is when somebody sends out the board packets. But staff should not send an opinion or substantive communication about board members' business from a board member to enough other board members to constitute a quorum. So again, you're looking to avoid the proposing of legal actions. Internet and social media networking is prevalent in our society now. Blogs, social media like Twitter and Facebook can present the same issues as email among board members. If a quorum of members is discussing board business using any technological means, a meeting may result. And this type of communication may be considered a virtual meeting, requiring notice and access to technological equipment, as it was noticed in the virtual meeting opinion. This type of communication results in the creation of electronic public records, and must be maintained, preserved, and produced upon request.
Can I ask a quick question?
You may.
So if a council member were invited to be on, say, a radio show in Prescott at some point, hypothetically, and were to say something along the lines of, "What I think we ought to do is X," are we looking?
And we're going to get to that a little bit later with your opinions regarding the press. You certainly still have First Amendment constitutional rights to express your opinions as elected politicians. It's kind of why you exist.
I just want to say, going back to the emails, I was told, "Don't ever hit 'reply all.'" And then I just found out that, you know, with the new, our new email Microsoft Outlook system, it's kind of hard to not hit reply all, but then I heard that we can disable that on our phones, so.
Yeah, good information. One of the practice tips we suggest for the elected officials is have a little blurb on the bottom of your basic email communication. You know, it has your name, your title, that says, "Please do not reply all" to this email. But yeah, I didn't realize that the new Microsoft 365 was a little bit more maybe sensitive on hitting that.
I think there's a default that's set up in it, and if you go in there, you can default it so that, you can still reply all, obviously, but I think if you hit reply, it won't initially reply all.
Yeah, the way I, and I'm no technological expert at all. When you hear how I explain this, you'll realize it. But on the new system, there's a reply button with a single little bent arrow and a reply all with two little bent arrows. So avoid the two little bent arrows. That's your expert legal advice. So if you take nothing else out from this.
One arrow at a time.
One arrow at a time. Take one arrow for the tea at a time. All right, staff and other persons in regards to the open meeting law. You cannot direct staff to communicate in violation of the open meeting law. Sanctions may be imposed upon any person who knowingly aids, agrees, or agrees to aid or attempts to aid another in violating this article. So here's just some general meeting etiquette. It's just beyond the open meeting law, but things that tend to get people into trouble. And it's a kind of a public perception thing more than anything else is, to the extent you can avoid passing notes, even if it's about what to order for lunch, that's always a good practice tip. You don't want to be whispering to each other while you're on the dais. You don't want to privately use modern technology. You shouldn't be texting while you're on the dais. Easier said than done, I know. At a quorum, you don't want to be talking to individuals before the meeting officially starts or after the meeting officially ends. You want all your discussions and deliberations to occur at the public meeting. Social events. You see this quite a bit. If a quorum may be present, you get invited as a group to things all the time, but you're not necessarily planning on discussing or taking legal action on information that may come before the council. So what the clerk does is she can post a courtesy agenda that includes a statement that no business of the public body will be discussed and no action will be taken. Kind of getting into public forums, speeches, and community events, kind of the stuff you live for, right? If a quorum might be present when one or more council members plan on speaking or discussing city business with those in attendance, a special meeting agenda should be posted. Agendas must include the description of the general topic or topics to be discussed and that no action will be taken. And we recommend the city attorney take a look at those for accuracy. Here we are at communications with the media. So to the previous question, the open meeting law does not prohibit a member of a public body from speaking to the media regarding matters that may come before the body. That is an ARS 38431-09B. They had it in '08, and there's an Attorney General opinion on that as well.
Matt, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So going back to Mayor Protem Rusing's question about that, if you had like a subcommittee, say, that had three members on it, and two members would constitute a quorum, and then those two members were to meet on a radio show, wouldn't that be a sticky situation for open meeting law?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess my question is, how do you navigate that situation?
I think that may be one, that it's a good example. One, you shouldn't be discussing information that may come before the subcommittee and ultimately the city council. So what we probably recommend in that instance is doing the courtesy notice stating that a majority of a subcommittee may be attending or presenting at a radio show, although no official action will be proposed or taken. That's, and that's a tough one, because now you're at the balance of, this one, this is, open meeting laws do not prohibit the member of a public body, that's a member, right, an individual member, but your problem is you may have a quorum. So I'd be careful. From voicing an opinion or discussing an issue with the public either at a venue other than a public meeting of the body, or through media outlets, or other public broadcast communications, or technological means, so long as, quote, "The opinion or discussion is not principally directed at or directly given to another member of the public body." That's kind of the fine line you gotta, you gotta walk there. I mean, I always go for conservative advice and avoid discussing matters that perceivably could come before your subcommittee or ultimately the council. But.
I think that answers my question.
You do have a right to express an opinion as well. And, quote, "There is no concerted plan to engage in collective deliberation or take legal action." Again, it's this idea of you don't want to be proposing legal action. So what are the public rights to an open meeting? Public has a right to attend an open meeting. Public has the right to listen to what's being said. They have the right to tape, record, or videotape the meeting. The public does not necessarily have the right to disrupt a meeting. These are business meetings of the council that make decisions, and certain levels of decorum are expected. There is no necessarily right to the public to speak on an item unless the item is a true public hearing. The local government, like it does in Prescott, certainly can allow for the public to speak on matters, and it does, but there isn't necessarily a statutory right unless it's an official public hearing. And your most common official public hearings are liquor licenses, which I don't think anyone ever shows up to discuss.
No, I think it's been with once.
And probably more relevant are often your planning and zoning, rezoning hearings. So when in doubt, we resolve all doubts in favor of openness. Remember, legal action taken during a meeting held in violation of any provision of the open meeting law is null and void unless later ratified. I added this slide because the last time I did this, it probably was a couple years ago, Mayor Protem Rusing was first on. She said, "What are the penalties if you violate the open meeting law?" And I said, "Well, I know some of them, and I know there's more, but I just can't remember them off the top of my head." So the violation of the open meeting law carries the following potential enforcement and penalty options. Mandatory nullification of business transact in violation of the open meeting law. Civil penalties between $500 and $2,500, and the city statutorily cannot pay for your defense on those and/or your fines. Equitable re-. Equitable relief, attorney's fees if a party brings an action and is successful, and ultimately removal from office. That's a pretty draconian one, and usually involves an absolute intent to deceive the public. But not unheard of.
Matt, what is the, who's the enforcer of those? Like, how does that, like, happen?
Generally defaults to the county attorney. Ultimately, it's the Attorney General, but they can kind of deputize, and the statute allows for the county attorney to investigate. So you'll see it come from either one of two places, from the state through the Attorney General's office, or the county through the county attorney's office. That's usually who's doing the investigations and ultimately making recommendations for enforcement. And certainly, you probably have a right to a trial if you kind of deny any, if there's a criminal charge, or even a civil charge. Doesn't necessarily get rid of your due process rights, but those are the people who would be bringing the claims. So we're out of the open meeting law, and we're going to get into public records a little bit. Arizona has a strong presumption in favor of disclosure of public records. The exception is what's called a three-part test when the disclosure and access is outweighed by confidentiality, privacy, or the best interests of the state. And we see this pretty much every day when people do public records requests, and we review them. Those are the three exceptions to not providing a record. The record could still be a public record, but it may be withheld, but it's very rare. So what is a public record? Records that reasonably, that are reasonably necessary to provide an accurate accounting of their official activities of the government and any government-funded activities and other matters. What does that mean? Includes documents held by the public officer in his or her official capacity and in which the public's interest in disclosure outweighs the government's interest in confidentiality. All records made or received by public officials or employees in the course of their public duties are the property of the city. All public officers are responsible for preserving, maintaining, and caring for the public records within their offices. A public officer or other person having custody or possession of any record for any purpose who steals or knowingly or without lawful authority destroys, mutilates, defaces, alters, falsifies, removes, or secretes, all are part of a public record or permits. Any other person to do so is guilty of a Class IV felony.
Matt, can I ask a practical question here? When it comes back to the email system?
Yes.
Is there, and this may be a question for IT and not you specifically, but maybe you might have a sense of this, is there, is that retention just happening in the background of the city email?
Yeah, we save everything.
Okay.
And I think at this point, it's almost perpetual.
Okay.
So the records just never go away, and we have ways to kind of act.
I have a question, Matt.
Yeah.
If you're a public official and you have a Facebook account, and there's a potential charge of open meeting law violation, and Facebook has canceled your account, have they committed a felony? Because you can't access those public records.
Probably not, because the onus is on the government to retain the public records. So Facebook has their own system. It may not be applicable to them.
Says any public officer or other person.
Public officer has a problem if Facebook gets rid of them, because it's the public officer's duty to maintain those records. So you're going to have to figure out a way to potentially subpoena those records is probably the, it's going to require a court order, I would think. I mean, you certainly ask for them, but they're not subject to the open meeting law. People do public records requests at the city 20 times a day, right? And they're entitled to receive the records as a general matter of law, but Facebook is not a governmental entity. So good luck if you're not...
Well, it says, "Any other person having custody or possession of any record for any purpose." Think that falls into that category, doesn't it?
Arguably. I don't think it's ever been tested, but it's an interesting, you want to send up the test balloon in Prescott, come be the head of this...
Fortunately, I don't have a Facebook account, so somebody else will have to volunteer.
I think you may have just talked me out of getting rid of mine.
So, "In the best interest of the state," or in this case, "the city," can permit a public body to designate certain records as confidential when, quote, "the release of information would have an important and harmful effect on the duties and officials or the agency in question," end quote. So public officers should always be balancing the possible adverse effects on the operation of the public body if the information in question is disclosed against the public's right to be informed about the operations of its government. We've litigated a few best-interest-of-the-state cases throughout the years I've been here, and you never win. So it's tough. It's a tough hurdle. It is possible, you usually do much better on things that are confidential as a matter of law, and occasionally some privacy interests, but even that one's becoming tough to keep records out of the public body, or from the public. So the cloak of confidentiality cannot be used to save an officer or the public body for inconvenience or embarrassment. That's an important distinction to remember. So that's public records sort of in a nutshell. The takeaway is just assume everything you do is a public record, and everything you do on behalf of the city is a public record, and be circumspect on the way you communicate. Conflict of interest law, ARS 38501 through 511. This is a strange law because it's sort of written in the negative. It tells you what a conflict is not, but we'll get into it a little bit. We'll talk about the applicability of it, and involvement in decisions, the distinction between substantial and remote interests, certain prohibited acts, remedies and penalties, and certain guidelines. So the conflict of interest law is applicable to all public officers, including board and commission members. So folks in the audience, it applies to you. It also applies to all public employees. So a public officer who has or whose relative has a substantial interest in a decision of the public agency or any contract, sale, or purchase, or service to such public agency must disclose that interest in the official record and not vote on or participate in the decision or transaction. That's the general definition. So what is a substantial interest? A substantial interest is any pecuniary or proprietary interest, either direct or indirect, other than a remote interest. Again, I told you, this is a rather confusing statute. Pecuniary means do you stand to make or lose money. Proprietary means do you stand to make or lose property. So think in terms of whether a decision you're going to make is going to directly benefit or hurt you from a money or property standpoint. Generally, any interest that affects your financial or property interest. So always ask yourself three questions to try to identify whether you have a conflict of interest. First one is, will my decision have a positive or negative impact on my interests or that of my relatives? And second question, do I have a monetary or ownership interest in the matter? And third question, is my interest other than one of the designated remote interests? What do you do if you have a substantial conflict of interest? You refrain from voting or on or participating in the decision. You make the conflict of interest known in the official records, and you, we recommend that you leave the table for the dais and even leave the room, so you're not there making furtive gestures, or doing this, or doing that, or doing that in the presence of the rest of the council. So remote interests. Remote interests are financial and property interests deemed to be so minor as not to trigger the reporting or nonparticipation requirements. And if that's the case, the council member may still vote and participate in the decisions. Here are some examples of remote interests. They're generally laid out at the end of the statute. So a person who's a noncompensated officer of a nonprofit corporation, who's also making the decision, can still participate. There's a landlord or tenant of a contracting party, remote interest exception. An attorney whose client is a contracting party. A member of a nonprofit marketing association. Owner of less than 3% of shares of a corporation unless the income from the ownership exceeds 5% of the officer's income. Let me go backwards here. Remote interests are reimbursement for your actual unnecessary expenses and performance of your official duties. So you might get some mileage if you have to go out of town for a meeting on behalf of the city. This one's pretty normal. The receipt of municipal services under the same terms and conditions as the general public. That's the one that says you've got a kind of a legitimate pothole-filling program going on, and your house is in front of a pothole. Because the members of the city are getting the same benefit or a larger group, you can vote on the matter. An officer or employee of another public agency, unless a direct economic benefit or detriment to the officer or employee relative is involved. And this one comes up every once in a while. A member of a group of class of at least 10 with an interest no greater than that of another. And we saw that kind of pop up in Lake Havasu a lot, where all of our council members were also realtors. So every time they made a decision on a zoning, the public would come up, "Well, you have the potential to get a brokerage contract on that." Well, no, because you're a member of a group of 10 or less, and it's a more remote interest than a specific interest. So other prohibitions, obviously, you know, gifts and bribes are frowned upon. Never use your official position to secure, and never accept anything of value or benefit that would not ordinarily accrue in the performance of your duties. I think the city of Prescott has a policy on that. It's like a $50, you know, you can accept a...
Gift card.
Yeah, kind of a small, de minimis gift if the value's under $50. The same probably applies to the council, because years ago, the council did a resolution saying, "We'll follow the same ethics rules that we are imposing upon our employees." Additional income, a public officer or employee may not receive any additional compensation in matters before the body. So what if you aren't sure? You can ask for an opinion from the city attorney. Opinions by the city attorney regarding conflicts of interest or matters of public record and filed with the city clerk. So occasionally, a council member will ask for us to provide an opinion. The opinion would normally say you do not have a conflict. If you had a conflict, we tell you you have a conflict, and you should not participate in a decision. Those written opinions are maintained by the clerk's office as a matter of statute. So always feel free to lean upon us if you have any questions. What are the remedies if you violate the conflict of interest law? The contracts are voidable. The person who's adversely affected can sue, and the court may assess attorney's fees and costs if the other party is successful on their case. Other penalties, again, this forfeiture from office could be a felony if you knowingly and intentionally violate the conflict of interest law. Could be a misdemeanor if you're negligent or reckless in violating the conflict of interest law. All right, so I think that is it for open meeting law, public records, and conflict of interests. And now I've got to figure out how to get to harassment.
Yeah, it's minimized.
And this one is geared more towards kind of employee training, but it is still applicable to the elected officials, and it's good practice not to harass each other or the members of the public or your staff. That's the takeaway. Be nice. So the objective of this training is to promote respect and dignity in the workplace, to understand city policy and laws. The federal provisions are Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, and there's also a mini Title VII in Arizona. It's an Arizona civil rights law. And harassment is not just sexual anymore. Harassment can be sexual, nonsexual, and composed of bullying behavior. And the idea today is we want to help prevent harassment in the workplace and explore the responsibility of each employee to help maintain an environment free of harassment. So the city of Prescott has obviously policies on sexual harassment in Article V of our administrative regulations, and also a policy on anti-discrimination harassment and hostile work environment. So obviously, the city strives to maintain a workplace that fosters mutual respect and provokes positive and productive working relationships. We will not tolerate any form of unlawful discrimination or harassment, which may create a hostile work environment, including harassment or discrimination based on the race, color, gender, national origin, religion, age, disability, or sexual orientation of any employee by another employee, supervisor, manager, customer, or non-employee. That's where you come in, non-employees. So federal and state law both hold that it's a form of employment discrimination for unwelcome conduct based on, again, those protected classes of race, color, religion, sex, including pregnancy, national origin, age, 40 or older, disability, genetic information, or sexual orientation. It seems every few years, this list just kind of grows a little bit. The last two are fairly recent add-ons. What makes harassment unlawful? If enduring the conduct is a condition of staying employed, or, this is what we see most, the conduct is severe or pervasive, intimidating, hostile, or offensive to a reasonable person. That's where the majority of these reported cases kind of come out. So what is severe or pervasive? A single unwanted request for a date or one sexually suggestive comment might offend you and/or be inappropriate, but it may not be sexual harassment. A number of relatively minor separate incidents may add up to sexual harassment if the incidents affect your work environment. So harassment is offensive jokes. It can be slurs, name-calling, physical assaults or threats, intimidation, ridicule, or mockery. Offensive objects are pictures, interference with work performance, rude gestures, and more. Now, local policy can be broader than the law. Excuse me. Even though conduct is welcome, so employees may be joshing and joking around with each other, it can still violate the city's policy regarding expected behavior at work. Employers can prohibit bullying behavior. That may not be illegal harassment. If the behavior is disrespectful, demeaning, rude, or vulgar, and bullies harass, to harass everyone, they don't just pick on protected classifications. So there could be local policies that go beyond traditional harassment. And who are the harassors? It is not just men. It could be men and women. It could be supervisors, coworkers, elected officials, vendors, customers, and volunteers. And forms of harassment other than sexual harassment are just as serious and just as unlawful. People who are harassed on the basis of their race and color, given the history of slavery in the United States. People who are harassed on the basis of their religion, national origin. See with immigrants and immigration issues, this pops up every once in a while. Age, pressure to retire, offhand comments, disability, gender identity, and sexual orientation. Sexual harassment. Sexual harassment is unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, and other verbal or physical conduct of a sexual nature, where the conduct affects the person's employment, unreasonably interferes with their work performance, or creates an intimidating, hostile, or offensive work environment. Simple teasing, offhand comments, isolated incidents that aren't serious are not sexual harassment, although that behavior could violate another city policy if we took a broader view of. So there are two types of sexual harassment you need to know about. There's the quid pro quo, which is the Latin phrase for this, for that. It's the most serious form of sexual harassment. It asks for sex in exchange for a raise, ideal shift, increased hours. Threatening an employee if they decline the sexual advances is harassment. Typically involves a supervisor and subordinate, and it's use of power to get sex. The other, more common form of hostile sexual harassment that we see is the hostile work environment. Things like leering, sexual gestures, suggestive pictures, objects or cartoons, derogatory comments, slurs, jokes, graphic comments about someone's body or sex life, inappropriate touching, impeding or blocking movements, suggestive or sexually graphic letters, notes, emails, comments on social media. Harassment and social media. Harassment and social media. Employees are entitled to express opinions on social media, but free speech is not unlimited. When comments and behavior that violate the anti-harassment policy or direct at a coworker's or employee's, and it carries over into the workplace, the city will address them. Social media can be an environment that's ripe for bullying behavior, so be respectful. Retaliation is strictly prohibited. You cannot retaliate against an employee who has complained to management about harassment, even if they're not the victim, or participate or cooperate in an investigation. City policy prohibits employees from lying, pressuring others to lie, or covering up prohibited harassment conduct. And retaliation is just as serious as actual harassment, and the consequences are just as serious. So, what to avoid? Some practice tips. It's okay if I hug her or talk to her that way. She's my friend, neighbor, et cetera. Try not to do that. I was just telling coworkers about the late-night TV shows on TV, so what's the big deal? Ah, we were just kidding around. He joked with me about the same kinds of things in the past. She never told me that she was offended when I sent those emails to her, so I thought she was interested in going out with me. Basic, common-sense stuff. So, when is an employer liable for harassment? If the employer fails to act reasonably to stop or prevent sexual harassment of a non-supervisor, including non-employees. Sexual harassment is by a manager or other supervisor or employee, and individuals can be liable if they participate in the harassing conduct and/or they aid and abet it. So, the consequences of harassment? You're going to have all sorts of work-related problems. The person who is the target of harassment will generally experience a high-stress level, often feel a little bit of helplessness. You're going to start seeing potential absenteeism. They're going to kind of pull away from their work performance and may leave the job instead of putting up with the harassment. And the consequences for people who harass others are serious employment consequences, up to and including termination, ruin your own reputation. How do you explain at your next job why you left the last job? Possible civil and criminal liability. So, what do you do if you're harassed? Don't continue to tolerate it. Report it, so it can be investigated and addressed. Don't think that management and HR department already know about the conduct, because chances are they don't. That's why you need to report. Remember that retaliation against employees who report perceived harassment is prohibited. Please, report it. You cannot retaliate, even after an investigation may exonerate somebody. You still cannot retaliate. So, what do you do if an employee comes to you? Listen, take notes, gather the facts. The old five interrogatories: who, what, where, when, and why. Notify human resources to determine a course of action. Document your follow-through. Do not promise confidentiality. Employees' supervisors have a duty to act. For city officials, you are the city in the eyes of the law. What you do and you don't do reflect on the city. If you ignore harassment, the city may be liable. If you don't handle it correctly, the city may be liable. And if you engage in harassment, you can be sued personally. Don't fail to act. If you see that there's an issue, address it. We're here to provoke a harassment-free workplace. And that is it. That's a lot of information. We try to do it once a year. EOC tells us we have to do the harassment training once a year. Just know, you can always just pick up the phone or call us if you have any questions regarding any of this stuff. We're happy to address it with you. And my understanding now is Mr. Lamar is going to talk to you about the council-manager form of government.
Does this have your schmutz here? My presentation will be short and sweet, comparatively speaking. Most of you guys are already familiar with the council-manager form of government, but along with what Matt went through, it's always good with, you know, a new council. Can I go over what the council-manager form of government is as we enter a new situation and a new term? So, it's fairly simplistic in its operation. The way it works is that the council sets policy, and the manager and his team, which is basically the 500-plus reports I have, implement the policy. A really good way to create an analogy with this is if it was a ship, council sets where the ship is going, and the manager is kind of the captain of the ship and the crew, and we work on getting you to the destination. It's not the only form of government out there. There's a strong mayor form of government, which you see a lot in eastern, big cities, like you saw a situation with Giuliani after 9/11, where you have a single person who kind of drives the day-to-day operations. That isn't what we have here, and it's not what we have here just by mistake. It's actually part of our charter. As you can see, it's in the city charter, Article 1, Section 2. In Article 3, if you're interested in looking at it in more detail, if you haven't, it outlines the duties that are the responsibility of the manager. Another way to create an analogy is it's a little bit like a private corporation who has a board of directors who says, "We want to go this direction," and then they hire a CEO to get them to go that direction. It's really important, obviously, to try to have a positive and productive relationship between the people that make the policy and the person that implements it. Really key and crucial is to get very early on in a tenure for a manager is the policy direction of a new body like this. Very happy that we're going to be doing strategic planning very early next year. What's the date? Is it the 6th or the 4th of January? It'll give me some clear guidance in terms of your holistic macro policy directions and a litany of areas. I'm sure each of you will come with some ideas about what's really important to you. Obviously, something else that you'll see in another slide is one thing that you as a collective will get your arms around is it's all well and good for one of you to have a policy direction you'd like to go. If you can't find three other people to follow you in that policy direction, you don't go that policy direction. It's kind of the way it works. The biggest part of the job and city manager, in my mind, is the implementation of the policy. Once the policy is set by the elected officials, it is imperative that the manager is able to implement it. And I think it's really important that there's a shared confidence and appreciation and respect, both directions, between the people that sit at this dais and the manager, and also from the manager's staff back to the city council. Having a respect for the varying roles and responsibilities of the parties involved is really quite important as well. You know, there are going to be gray areas, and when there are gray areas, I've always had a very open-door policy. We can work through those if there's instances where you feel like possibly you'd like to be a little bit more involved, or I'm comfortable with that. I've always been very receptive to those kinds of relationships, and I'll continue to be. And I think something that a lot of you feel really passionately about is the last item on here, and that we need to assure the public and get the public confident in its local government. I think we have some really exceptional people in this organization, and we have a lot of people that work very hard. We need to convey that to the folks that live here, that there is a professional staff here that is doing really good work, and will continue to do so. It is a team. I mean, it's very cliche, and I think the next slide is, we need to communicate, so I'll hit both of those, the cliches, but it really is a team effort. The manager needs to support the council by giving well-prepared and clear recommendations. And when I say recommendations, you know, it's one thing for you guys to set policy, but I think what you'll realize is it's nice for the manager to kind of set the table and at least put it in a manner that you're not all over the board, at least give you some options that are implementable, or realistically implementable, if implementable is a word. Otherwise, it's kind of like catch-as-catch-can, and it's very ad hoc. I will not steer you one way or another in those regards, just give you here some options, and I think that's a very important role for the manager. I need to be responsive to decision requests that are forwarded to you, and when I say that the manager supports the council by this, it's also the manager and his staff, because a lot of these things are addressed by the 500-plus people, as I've referenced, that work for me. I think we're very responsive to citizen requests. We could always strive to do better, and we will. And we need to keep council informed of what's going on. I noticed over my tenure that the worst thing for me to do is get one of you caught blindsided. It seems to whack me over the head indirectly later on. So, self-preservation is a hell of a motivator. Now, there will be instances where something is come to your attention that I don't know about, because that's just the nature of living in a community, but I will try to get to the bottom of what it is, and more often than not, try to be proactive with keeping you informed of what's going on. I mean, and when I say that, I'm not going to inform you about how many staples are sitting on Martha's desk, because that's not really why you're hired, to do what you're doing, but for big policy decisions and large projects, I think it's very important for you guys not to get caught off-guard by your citizenry. And areas you could help me, just a general understanding and a respect of clear lines of authority that exists in the organization, and I am familiar with a lot of managers who say every single thing that the elected body wants to have a discussion about individually needs to go through the manager. I think that's completely ridiculous and counterproductive, but there are instances where I feel like the elected officials reaching down into the organization and deciding they want this individual to be the person on something is just not appropriate, and it causes us inefficiencies and lack of effectiveness in some regards. This is a biggie. It's hard when you get accosted on the street by a citizen about staff or stuff going on. It's always nice and well-appreciated and keeps morale up from a staff perspective if you just don't assume the worst. Not that, obviously, you can't agree with the citizen or want to investigate it and get to the bottom of it, but you won't be shocked to know that not everything you hear from everybody is accurate on either side of the street. Again, in terms of morale, I don't mind the criticism as much publicly. I take it a lot harder when it's directed to the people that don't make the kind of money I do. I take the responsibility of protecting the people that work for me from slings and arrows as much as humanly possible seriously. I feel like that's part of being a leader. So, if there are instances where you feel like criticism is appropriate of staff, I would much rather you have that conversation with me one-on-one. I think it builds a better working relationship long-term, because you might be alienated with Susie on this specific issue, but you might need Susie on the next one, so there's also a practical ramification for not alienating Susie. I think that you guys setting reasonable expectation, which is what the goal-setting will be at the beginning of the year, is great. Clear direction for staff is huge. I think you'll see, when you come up with goals that are important to you, we'll work diligently to implement those. And if this council feels that the goal-setting this year will look a lot different than in past years, it's completely fine. It's my responsibility to right the ship and get you to where you want to be. Communication. I guess it was the two slides out. I will communicate with you guys in any way, shape, or form you think is appropriate. I mean, the ways to communicate now are varied. You want to have sit-down meetings. You want to have weekly phone calls. You want to communicate via text or email. I'm sure all of you, at one point or another, will use each of those mechanisms, but if you have a preferred methodology, if you want it to be ad hoc as you need it, that's cool. If you want it to be more structured, that's cool, too. The ability for us to have those kind of dialogues, I think, avoids some of the pitfalls of you getting caught off-guard, because, again, there'll be things that come up in the course of the day that I will find just part of doing business that are more than just part of doing business to you. So, whenever and wherever you'd like to have these dialogues, I'm here. And I'm over there. Well, if you like that. My major responsibilities, again, is to bring forward whatever the majority of council's looking for in terms of implementing policy, sees that all the ordinances are enforced, that that doesn't come with a badge, so that's an interesting job every once in a while. Appoint, transfer, remove all department heads and other employees. You also find, too, on the higher-up appointments that I make, even though they're my responsibility, I am very interested in your input and participation in one regard or another. We have a few jobs opening up right now. Fire chief and public works director that I know are going to be very important to you guys. I certainly will have some participation with you guys, because you need to be comfortable with the final decision as well as I do about who we're getting. And again, I have to decide what's appropriate in terms of what level of staff I can give you guys the ability to interact with on a meaningful basis. It's not appropriate to ask the receptionist what our water policy is. Not that any of you have done that, but you can understand how that would be somewhat complicated for me. And then, keep the council advised at all times of the affairs and needs of the city. There are things that I notice going through the, you know, day-to-day operations of this organization that I'll, you know, pull you aside at some point and say, "I think this is going to be something we're going to have to look at." That happens a lot. Those informal dialogues are also very crucial, I think, to running an efficient and effective If you would like a dissertation on the council-manager form of government, I would be glad to provide it. It's not all that exciting. And again, back to the analogy, it really is the council saying where we're going, and the manager determines what resources are required to make it happen. Every once in a while, the destination may be not totally realistic, like, you know, Bora Bora or something, and I might have to tell you that we might not be able to get there. So, does anybody have any questions, comments? Clark?
Given that your position is super-important in getting us to where we need to go, we're certainly lucky to have some of your experience and caliber and skillset.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the work that you do. Thank you. See, mine was a lot easier than yours, so...
Thank you, Michael. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Mr. Pedraki, for your presentation. I think we are being well-served by our city manager and interim city attorney, and hopefully we will be able to fill the roles that we're recruiting for here pretty soon. But clearly, Michael, your experience has expanded with the many challenges that the city has had to deal with over the last several years. And with that, we hope and expect that that performance and protecting the city's interests will continue to grow. So, are there any other questions or comments?
Mayor, I just want to say, Michael, I've been really grateful for the effort that you've made to make the transition for myself, Eric, and Jessica go smoothly, and I would echo that down to your staff as well. I found everyone at the city to be very professional and accommodating, and it's been really nice. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you, everyone. This study session is adjourned.